Which architect, what are you talking about?
So we spoke with the building's architect and we asked.
Okay.
Everything that should be built, like a lot of these architects should be using. Certain like handbook.
Thanks for asking.
Homework.
What building, what building we talking about?
Oh, not in particular.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think there used to be somewhat of a threshold. I do not believe that this rises to that threshold.
No, not necessarily. The, uh, there's the three separate like openings.
Yeah, but that's just because the candidates have been moved.
I mean, I'm training a new employee tonight, so I did that a little early. There's also a chamber commerce meeting tonight. Here and there, that would be there.
Yeah, they're gonna remove that and they're not proposing it over the other entries and they are proposing a third.
I would like to take a leave on vacation, but these projects, I don't know when a good week is going to be. You know, once we go out to bid, like, oh, we know more about the time.
Yeah, once we get, you know, in trouble perhaps, then you can take a look.
Yeah, I mean, I could go right now. I could really use an explanation.
I wonder when, when that might be.
During the school year and then the rest of the.
But then the breaks were.
Caught up on the order. Can't do that during the school year when their kids in the.
So we finally, we finally hired a contractor manager for one of our projects.
What are, what are the ones you have on? Uh.
Get my vocals.
Yeah.
Is my posture right?
Is there like a legislator bingo card that contributes to it?
No.
We're called corrupt, right?
Oh, yeah, we were, we were called stooges.
So American vinolia, is that what you call it? Oh, vinola.
This is kind of.
V I T N. Nyoki.
Individual municipalities.
Niola.
Yeah.
Oh, that's even stranger, vin, vinloa? That's, I've known it with those.
Housing.
What's that?
American vinloa or vinloa as a architectural style?
A book. Vinolia, parents of suit nola.
Rehabilitation.
V I T N, LOA.
Okay.
American vinloa.
So all of a sudden, we, I don't know what that is.
It's a book.
Very popular book or not. But not in a way that indicates the population back.
Okay, so anything's, okay.
William Robert Ware.
For architects or kind of for village as far as.
Published in nineteen oh two.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's seven o'clock, yeah.
Two and a half years.
I don't know if he is.
Bus route that goes right by it's with.
Oh, he wasn't?
Shop.
Yeah, he said he wasn't.
It meets all the criteria, so. So the county's gonna buy it.
Okay, yep, well, yeah.
Oil opposition in the legislature.
Stirred up. Secret determination is a resolution, but you guys can watch out for that.
They don't want their neighbor to best feel. I said, how? How are you gonna persuade us to keep it someplace? And they did it for six hours. They, they look thing fast, so.
Seven oh one, should we start?
All right, it's, uh, June fourteenth. This is the planning board meeting. It's seven o'clock, can, uh, get a roll call, please, Vivian?
Um, Rob Sister.
Here.
Adam Rossky. Lumi Sella.
Here.
Pete Pennelli. And Michael Sanders.
Here. Lou, you wanna lead us in the pledge?
Boy, delete this. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Do you guys get a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes.
Get a motion. Your approval, disagree?
I'll second it.
On favor?
All right.
All right, first, um, the agenda tonight is Paulie Free library. You guys wanna come up?
Um, sure, I mean, basically, uh, we were here last month and, um, uh, we, you guys determined that we needed to refer to the county. And so, uh, you referred to the county and the county referred back saying it's a matter of local concern, so we're hoping that, um, tonight you'll be positioned to, um, to report the project.
All right, yeah, I didn't have to actually get up and speak, I just didn't know if you wanted to come up in front of the room. It's fine, I guess you could've stayed there and see.
So I think you have everything that you need to make a determination on site plan approval.
Okay, did we just make a motion to, uh?
Yeah.
Approve.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, were there any conditions that you were considering? I don't have any on my mind, I just.
No, there weren't any conditions.
No.
I remember, no.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Yeah, so can we get a motion to approve the site plan for point for labor?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, site plans for the only for labor.
I'll second it.
On favor? Hi.
I, I just wanna double check one thing, you all did not need any area variances, right?
No.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, and, uh, I assume at this point that the building inspector will be notified, just, then he can get going on his part.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, guys, have a good night.
Good luck, Grant.
Take care. All right, so, we're switching, we're doing twenty-one first, is that what you said?
Twenty-one.
All right, twenty-one, West Main Street. How's it going, Kurt?
Good evening, all, good. Lovely Tuesday night. Um, okay, just run you quickly through this thing, um. We have a parcel on the corner of West Main Street and Industrial Avenue, uh, number twenty-one, West Main Street. It is a, currently a two and a half story commercial building, uh, there's commercial and storage in the building. And the site is fully developed, what we're proposing to do is actually convert the building, keep commercial uses on the first floor and put, uh, two apartments on the second floor. And one apartment on the third story, half story, uh, up in there with, that has dormers. As speaking of dormers, I think that, just for clarification, at the last meeting, we had talked about, there's two dormers on the front, it looks like there's one missing. So, in discussions with the owner, he, uh, is proposing to actually add a third dormer to match, so the building has a little more balance.
It does, from the original.
Yes.
Original drawings that were done for that building, why that was left out, it made sense because of the way that the entry was supposed to be.
Yeah.
Designed, so when it changed.
Yeah, so we're probably gonna put that third to balance the building.
Yeah.
And on the front, uh, we'll remove that existing gable structure and we'll just leave the skirt around the front of that building.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the change on that. So we're, I think, uh, by the code, actually, I don't think we're required to have a certain number of parking spaces at the discretion of the planning board, but if you apply, uh, in the zone, the uses to the proposed uses on the site, we require seven parking spaces, or actually provide eight parking spaces on this, so. Have ample parking for the use, uh, per the village regulations, um, we're currently before the zoning board for, um, excuse me, not on this property, we're not, there's no zoning variances on this one, that's the other one, taking off, so. That's it in a nutshell.
No ground disturbance, right?
Uh, no, no.
So no ground disturbance, you're just gonna re-stripe?
Yes.
And you're, and then you're constructing a sidewalk?
Yeah, just along the front here, there's an existing sidewalk here that kind of comes into the front entry here, so that'll extend across the front between the parking and the front of the building, it's already a curvy surface now.
Well, the storage is right now, Kurt, what's, what's gonna be there, uh?
I, I think right now this, it's gonna be cleaned out, um, we'll probably put the garbage cans inside here just during the week and pull them out to the curb, uh, when they're collected, so. It'll remain fenced, but I don't think there'll be any.
Are there, are there gonna be garbage cans or some sort of a dumpster or are they gonna be enclosed?
I, I think it'll probably, well, it all is enclosed, this whole area is enclosed by fencing now, so I think just for ease of pulling the garbage cans out to the curb, that's what will happen there. When they're collected by the village or a private carter.
Is that the same as what you said last time?
Yes.
I recall hearing this in the last meeting.
There's really no way to access with a dumpster or anything, you gotta truck in there to get.
That's true, with the parking spaces you have there as well, you're right, uh, did you say there were gonna be two offices on the bottom?
Right now, there's gonna be, it's, we're calling it retail for now because that's the more stringent of parking requirements, what that, the owner thinks or the potential owner is gonna be doing is actually using that for his own business. So, uh, they may take the full lower floor or have the capability of breaking this one off over here, um, that's currently the fountain plumbing and heating office.
So you're proposing to?
Proposing to, it might be all one user, but proposing to, yes.
So are they keeping the refuse in that enclosed area right now?
I don't know where it is right now.
Okay.
I assume yes.
I mean, there's quite, there's quite a bit of refuse back there right now, yeah.
Yeah, so that won't go away.
The enclosure is in good shape, it closes?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was all, yeah, do you have anything else on this one?
Not right now.
All right, um, there's one issue that came up, I got a call from the building department today about, uh, I guess it would be the western side of the property, there's a stone wall and a fence on top of it that separates between a residential.
Mm-hmm.
House next door. I don't know if the survey, you guys give us a survey for this?
Yes, the survey, it shows right where the stone wall and the fence is, it's right on the property line.
All right, all right, uh. Building department said they got a call and said there was a discrepancy on where the stone wall is, if it's actually.
The survey shows that it's on the subject property, the parcel.
What survey, how, how old was that survey, do you even know? Was that dated, away, away?
But I think the stone wall was there when that was.
When that was already done?
Yeah, 'cause I think it's a newer stone wall, but, you know, it's not like a fifty-year-old stone wall, but.
All right, yeah, I, I know Sean said he would fix up, you know, a lot of the fencing around the rear and I would hope that would be the same on the side, that he was gonna clean some of that up because it was, it looked like forty different styles of fence that were on the backside of that place.
I think it behooves, if, if he's in the business of doing construction, I think it behooves him to do, show his best work on the site, so.
Sure. Does anybody else have any more questions, do you have any questions?
Well, it wasn't just the, that we went with the old survey, we got a copy of a later survey that disputes the boundary.
Oh, that I have.
That says the fence is.
It's, it's, it's point six, it's a little over here, a foot over, right.
Okay, that I haven't seen, I'm just going off the survey that we had as a record survey, so.
Yeah, we have that?
Yeah, we have, well, we have that documentation, I have that here.
It was actually a public comment, right?
Yes. Which, maybe it's here.
I'm here, I'm the neighbor.
Open the public here, though, if you're.
Right, before she hears it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, how does that affect, how does this, how does it affect this project, if that is the case, and, does it, is it more of a?
So, so, I mean.
Building department issue?
It's really a land use law issue, um, it's, you know, if, if there's a perceived encroachment, then it's generally, the, the surveyors kinda go at it and one person wins, and I don't know who determines who wins or why. But I, in the packet that we received, it seemed like there was a letter written by, um, the commenter's attorney saying, it's like the second or third page, saying, um, there's an encroachment, we'd like you to acknowledge that there is an encroachment and we're not asking you to take it down, if you acknowledge it, then please sign, and it was signed by.
Yes, from David Denton.
Kelly Lifland, who was, who is the property owner today, but I don't know is what the, I, I'm not sure what the implication was by the commenter including this documentation and what, what she's wanting from, you know, the applicant, but it has no sway on the environmental review. In terms of approving a site plan. You know, I, you would, you would want the survey circumstances to be on the up and up, so if there is a, an issue here that needs to be resolved, although it's not being impacted by this exact site plan.
All right.
Project, you know, as the administrator, by way of being the village, you know, you want to kind of have everyone's best interests, but it's not really our problem. It's, it's a land use law problem, it's a problem between the two property owners, I don't even know that the building inspector can do anything about it.
All right.
So, I, you know, I, I think we should see what the commenter says during the public hearing, so we can just better understand what exactly she's trying to accomplish.
All right. Lou, do you have any more questions?
I can.
Yeah, I think we can open up the.
Yeah. I think we'll be able to public comment.
Yeah.
I'll second.
On favor?
All right.
All right, thanks, Kurt.
Okay.
Um. I guess we have, anybody would like to, uh, comment on this project?
Well, I don't think, I, there's, there's nothing that has to be done except I think the letter speaks for itself, that, that letter from the attorney, he put it very well. That, um, all we wanted to do was to let the, the, uh, the other owner recognize that there was an encroachment, we're consenting to let it stand, we don't wanna turn, take down the stone wall, which, by the way, was not originally there, I have to tell you, that, that was built, um, when this property was developed for, for, for Lifland. That stone wall, this was all new, so, uh, wasn't originally there, I thought that's what just.
No, no, I, I mean, it wasn't just built recently, it was probably, because the survey was from two thousand and eight, so it's probably built about then, or so.
Yeah, and I don't know if the, if the survey was done before this, the, the wall was built or not, I, I don't, I don't mean, I don't have the details on that, however, um, so what we were trying to do was, uh, en- enlighten the, the project about this, because even though I have a letter signed by Kelly, it seems like the new owner would have to get a similar letter so that he would know, and the whole purpose of that is, ju- just as the attorney put it, which I thought was great, that in the event that I wanted to sell the property, it avoids, um, a problem with the title, you know, or the, the survey, because it's a known issue, we, we, you know, we are, uh, accepting that and, um, and that's, that's what it's about, it's, it's something that, um, I felt that should be known now. Because, like, because, and what brought it to my attention was that I read the minutes from the last meeting and you accepted the survey from two thousand and eight, so if you were to resurvey it, I think they may find a discrepancy, and, and I don't know how important that is to anybody. It was, my, mine was done in two thousand and nine, so, you know, that would be, I think, up to the board what you would require if it's necessary.
Yeah, newer survey, um.
Well, it's, it sounds like, it sounds like, as I'm understanding, it's just a matter of record just showing that there is an encroachment and being fair to the new owner, just, and I'm sure it would probably come up in the title search anyway, when the property transfers, but I think it's good due diligence that the new owner is aware that there is a potential encroachment, if there's two surveys that don't match, a lot of times that needs to be worked out or sometimes it doesn't, but.
Right.
There's just land that doesn't, you know, that sometimes just crosses in two surveys that don't match, but, um, I think it's just good that you brought it to the attention of the new owner.
It's all in good faith that this is being put out, you know.
Yeah, and I appreciate that on behalf of the owner.
You know, because I may be selling the house maybe within a year or so, and, and so I, I don't want, uh, you know, myself and my family to have a, an issue then, so if we can just keep it the way it is and if, if the sale goes through, then I think that he, uh, Sean would have to get a letter similar to the one, maybe we can get you a copy if you wanted to see.
Yeah, I'm sure that that could be done.
Similar, and probably exactly worded that way, just to let him know, and, and it's really for the potential of, um, uh, if, if there was no awareness that this letter actually would stop any kind of address possession in the future.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So that's what that was about.
So she's building the record.
Yes, no, it's good to go on record.
You're, you're building the record to maintain title of this area, which makes perfect sense.
Just keeping it all straight. Yeah, okay.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I, I don't think that personally that the board should necessarily require that they get a new survey, especially since Sean is contract vendee.
Right, and it may not, I mean, another surveyor or someone might not change the survey, there might just be a perpetual disagreement that those lines are not the same, or they could cross each other. It's a matter of how the surveyors come to an agreement, and sometimes they never do, and there's just a piece of land that's either over the top of each other or whatever, but it's, a lot of times, they don't match.
So, so that being the case, Kurt, then it would affect the title at all, if they do the title search?
No, it might, I mean, it might show, I don't know how the title search might go, but it might show that there are two surveys on record and one shows an encroachment, one doesn't, and, you know, if there's something in the file that shows that you agree to the encroachment and the new owner, I, it just builds the record, I think, is what you're, you're saying, Karen, so.
Well, actually, I think it's very generous of the, uh, of Judith.
Yes.
And not to, uh, you know, not to require the wall to come down, so, you know.
I agree.
Yeah, it's all in good faith, and as a matter of fact, it might amuse you to know that what, what brought me to, uh, get the surveyor is that we knew where all the markers were since when we bought it. And we measured it out, and so in order to prove that we had figured out that it was over the line, I had to spend seven hundred dollars and three hundred for the lawyer to make this right for, for me and for my family, you know, so that's, that's all it is, you know, just an awareness, okay?
Yeah, I, I'd hate to just have them have another surveyor come in and say the same thing, like, force them to pay a survey, and he may say, no, it, yeah, that lot line disagreement where you have two different surveyors.
Cause what is it, six inches or so that it's over?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's under a foot as.
A little, a little over a foot, yeah.
But he, you know, as the attorney said, an encroachment is an encroachment.
Yeah, yeah.
Six inches the other way.
Right, right, so, you know, I think if it's all on the up and up, that, you know, there's some sort of potential issue there, everyone's aware of it and and we're not proposing to change anything with that.
Yes.
Fence line at this point.
The stone wall is a beautiful stone wall.
Yeah, so.
However, the vinyl fence is an episode.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if Sean, if Sean was the owner today, then, you know, you could hold him to signing that letter as a condition of your approval or so, I, although I'm not sure that's actually legal, but
the point is that he's not even the owner of the property.
Right.
The owner of the property surveyed it, there's a discrepancy, they signed letters, so.
Right, I don't think it's a problem, really.
And, and the site plan doesn't affect that corner of the lot.
Right, uh, so, I, I had another, another point that I wanted to bring up, if it's okay, and it's just a request, because I looked at the site plan and I noticed, uh, where the garbage, the trash cans were situated, there's like six of them.
Yes.
They look like they're freestanding, and it just happens that they're right against the stone wall where my, one of my tenants parks. So, um, in my, my mind, I'm thinking, you know, six garbage cans right there is not gonna be a pretty, you know, pretty odor, you know, I would think, unless the, um, you know, so my question is, are these trash cans going to be secured, you know, in a, in an enclosure, and also is it possible to just move it on the other side to, against the, the building wall, you know?
I think, I think we could do that, I, I think it's just a matter of, just, we, that was an enclosed area in there where they have the outdoor storage right now, so.
Is it really, like, cause I, it looked like it was on the outside of the enclosure, you know where the, the gate is?
Yes.
It looked like those cans were in front of that.
No, it's behind, we're showing them behind the gate.
Oh, maybe.
You're talking two different things, she's talking about today.
Right.
And you're talking about what's proposed.
Isn't, isn't this the gate?
The gate's here.
Um, no, I'm, I'm sorry, it's not.
Okay.
I respectfully disagree, it's, it's here, I know the property really are.
Okay, okay, okay.
So what, what is this saying here?
That's, that's just a, showing the twenty-five foot.
Existing. Or it says existing.
Outdoor storage.
And there is a gate there, which is.
If there's, if there's a gate there, we can certainly pull these behind the gate.
Well, yes, but it's still against the stone wall.
Okay, so we can pull it over here.
Yeah, exactly, we're even, and.
It's just a matter of storing them here just to be able to pull them out on garbage day.
And could they enclose them, because having the experience over there, uh, I have mine all tied up and the cans have to be covered all the time, we've got six cans. And with the, you know, dogs or animals or whatever can get into them and, you know, the wood slide could, because there's so many, could they do in a little enclosure? You know, like, you know, uh, what do they call them, the trash enclosures, where they can put the refuse enclosure?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what, it's like an enclosure within an enclosure, I, I don't know what it's keeping, if we've got that gate there that we've got.
Oh, if, if the gate is there, yeah, I suppose.
Right, so if the gate's there, it's kinda within an enclosed area.
And if it could be away from the, 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 the west wall, that would be.
I'm sure we could do that.
That would be fabulous, yeah.
The west wall has, has a vinyl fence on top of it, correct?
That's correct, yes.
It does, falls down every now and then.
Well, we, we can address that to make sure that it's maintained, that it'll be repaired, and I'm sure, and I'm sure it will be, with the, with the stone wall and the vinyl fencing, aren't they hiding the, the trash cans?
Well, not on the original map. On your map, it, it, those cans are in front of the enclosure.
Yeah, so she's asking that we moved over here, if the gate's here, that they be moved over here, so, I'm sure that could be done, not a problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that, uh.
We can just pull it over there, it's really not a big deal.
Yeah, I think so, B one, I think they're actually, yeah, all right.
And I, I, you know, just speaking of the vinyl fence, as long as I'm up here and doing this, um, there, there's always a, a question of who's responsible for the repairs, because it falls down continuously. And, um, it turns out that the stone wall, the rear, the, the, against the, the church, is on the church property. That was built on the church property.
Okay.
And the vinyl is on top of it, then it goes across the front of, the, uh, uh, I guess the back of my property when you pull in, and then there's the common wa- wall between, uh, Lifland and I. That one is on his property, except for the six inches or whatever, so I, I wondered, um, there's been a discrepancy all along since it was built, who is responsible for it? Because I've mended it a couple of times when it falls in on my side, um, but, but from what I understand, um, it's not on Lifland's property and wants the church to fix it, so that's, that's, that's what's happening now, is that, will that be the case, or will a new one be put up and will it ever be taken down? Because that would be a problem if it's removed.
I think the contract vendee is here, but I would think if there's any problems with the fence, you would be responsible for taking care of it.
Even though it's, it's not on his property, though.
I, I probably.
Even though they put it up with the Lifland.
Yeah, but the, the discrepancy, is that the face of the stone wall or is that the fence itself, cause the fence sits on the stone wall, which is about this wide.
Right in the middle.
Kurt, so, excuse me, are we talking about the fence issue between the property and the church or the property and the?
No, the property and the neighboring owner.
And then property and the neighboring owner is on the current, our property side, correct?
Except for six inches.
Except for six inches, I guess there's, there's, I guess they have a survey, another survey, that there's a slight discrepancy with that, so.
Okay.
But even the one in the back, that's where the church is, who do you think would be responsible for that, because the church really doesn't have the, the resources to, to fix it, it's really.
Is, I'm not aware personally, or is there, is the fence currently in need of repair, on the church side?
Well, yeah, there is a, yes, there is a, there is a panel that's down, um, and then there's, there's one, one panel that's damaged on, um, facing me, but it's on, it's still on the church property, so in order for me to fix it, I have to go and buy a six-foot panel, and, you know, and I was willing to do that because it looked so bad. And, um, and so, you know, I'm, I'm kind of up in the air of what, what I should do to fix it, you know.
So, just to be clear, from our standpoint, is we fully intend on going in there and making drastic improvements to the way the building looks, from between aesthetically and the overall appearance from the outside of the street, you know what I mean, so, if, if the fence. You know what I mean? So if, if the fence, if it is damaged, we fully intend on fixing it.
You would fix it?
Yeah, I have no problem with that because I don't want to be a property owner that things are disheveled. Whether it's land six inches on your side or six inches on my side, I'd rather it look right so it doesn't become an eyesore and we don't have issues with neighbors or the church as a neighbor or things like that. So if it's a six-foot panel, in the grand scheme of things of what we plan to, to drastically improve the look of the building, a panel or two panels or something is relatively minor. And I, I know, I know I don't have an issue with it.
Have you looked at, have you been over there to look at?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I didn't happen to notice a specific fence. I was looking at a lot of other things.
You're welcome to come on my, my property.
Thank you.
And you'll see all the repairs that were done. So to me, the whole pro- the whole vinyl quality is really, it's poor, very poor.
Right.
Because it keeps breaking.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we work with a fence company now. We, we, I haven't had them out there yet because it's still early on in the process, obviously. But, yeah, no, but under no circumstances are we trying to leave anything, once obviously the title is, you know, title is changed and we become owners of the property. We don't plan on leaving anything as an eyesore.
But, but Sean, you understand that, that as it exists, it's, it's on the church property and, and fountain plumbing doesn't feel obligated to fix it.
Right, and I understand. And that's fountain plumbing, that's not the, the new order, that's for sure.
This is kind of very productive, like I'm playing that game. I almost didn't, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely. We can't speak for fountain plumbing, but we can certainly speak for ours, so.
That's fair enough.
And should that be, as we get further in the process, that could be a condition of potential site plan approval, that the fence be repaired?
Oh, I hope so. If it's his property, it's on the church property, it's kind of tough to put that, that condition on another property owner to fix something that's on someone else's property at the same time.
Yes, it's a little sticky.
Yeah. I mean, from a legality standpoint, if the fence does land on the church property, it is the church's problem. But I don't, I don't have a problem with coming out of pocket for the expense to fix it.
But it's fallen on, fallen into my driveway a couple of times, the whole panel.
That's what I'm saying. I have no prob- I don't know, but they're talking about conditions and things like that. If something's not on, I don't know who put it in 20 years ago or where they put it or if they didn't think of surveys and things. But I'd be happy to make it right.
Okay, that sounds really good. That's it.
Any other public comment? Are you guys leaving the fountain?
What's that?
Are you leaving the fountain?
No, I don't have, we don't have any intention on leaving the fountain.
What fountain?
I guess we can close public comment then. Sure. I make, no other, no other public comment, I would think. I make a motion that we close the public comment.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Why don't we move to the secret determination next?
Okay.
Are you prepared to make one?
How do you feel, huh?
I, I recommend making a secret determination.
Yeah, I think, you know, as far as the proposed changes to the outside of the building, it does, it looks better, sure, adding that extra dormer and getting rid of that, that entryway there. Not adding the other three or two. As far as aesthetics. Community character, things been there for a long time. I guess we've, we've gone through the rest of it. See Karen didn't find any, any other issues, right?
I, yeah, my, my recommendation is that it would be a negative declaration, a determination of non-significance. I mean, it's essentially an internal renovation. It's currently commercial, it'll become commercial and residential. There's no ground disturbance. They're fixing the one dormer on the top. It's going to improve the aesthetics of the property. Seems like a.
All right.
Low, low, low impact, sorry.
I make, I make a motion to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So.
Yeah, what's next?
I mean, you, you have everything in place now to approve the site plan, should you choose to. You could consider making, you know, conditions relative to where the refuse is kept. I don't think you can make a condition relative to.
No, not.
Repairing a fence on somebody else's property, but it seems like there's been a good conversation here. We are all here to witness it. You know, you don't have to make a site plan approval tonight, but you certainly have everything in your power to do that. All your other, you know, everything else is checked off the list, so.
I, I think, I think we should make site plan approval. And based on the conversation that we had tonight, I'm sure that Sean is, is going to be a good neighbor to, to the neighbors. And if there's anything that perhaps the neighbors will like addressed, I'm sure that Sean will go out of his way to make those corrections. I don't see anything detrimental here as far as trash cans go. I'm sure that if the, if Judith wants his trash can someplace else, if that's not, if that's not a major issue, I'm, I'm sure Sean will take care of that. And I know Sean, you know, will take care of the fence even if it's not on this property, even though we, we can't make that, that determination. But I'm confident that once we approve the site plan, that corner is going to, it's going to be a, a vast improvement at what it is right now. So I, so I say we move forward and, and approve the site plan.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, it doesn't sound like we can really set a condition with the help knowing that if that rear fence is on your property or not. And it does sound like good faith, you probably don't want everybody in the church seeing the back of your building anyway.
Don't mess with the church.
Maybe they'll even give you a write-off if you fix the fence if it's on their property.
Yeah, win-win.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't move forward with this voting on site plan tonight.
You want to make a motion this time?
I feel like, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for aesthetically making the building look a little better out front there.
Little steps, little steps.
All right, next up. Five Oak.
We'll just flip this over. Okay, here we have Five Oak Realty, northeast corner of Oak Street and Arch Street. Proposing to expand the existing one-story commercial building on there to create larger commercial space and an apartment on the first floor, which requires a special permit. And then a second story on the structure, which would have four residential apartments in that. There's a parking area existing on the site, which is essentially along the Arch Street curb cut. So we're proposing to provide five parking spaces on that for tenants only between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM. And then it can be used for customers of the commercial space during the daytime, but off-street or off-site merchant parking for any employees or owners of the commercial business there. So we're currently before the ZBA for various items within the urban regulations on this. We're trying to bring the building more in compliance with the urban regulations than it is currently. So we are bringing it closer to the front and try to anchor that corner a little bit better and regularize the parking and make that a little bit of a better situation there. So, and aesthetically, the building, I think you've seen the renderings on that, the property that was done to the north here, it'll basically follow a lot of the same details that were done on that mixed-use building as well.
All right, um, do you have any comment?
I would just point out that the, the signs are for resident parking only between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
Correct. Yeah. And then during the day, that can be for tenants or commercial, the customers for the commercial space.
Well, I went by, I went by Arch Street a couple of times today and there was only one car parked at that merchant parking car area all day. So there's, there's ample, there's ample old street park.
So they, they require area variances, as Kurt noted. Those variances cannot be granted until the secret determination is made and the site plan approval can't be granted until the area variances are granted.
All right. Was there any issues that you found in, in Seeker?
Um, no, I mean, we, we, we considered at great length the parking at the last meeting. And good that you still are seeing lots of merchant parking available. We've identified where area variances are required. You know, the complications there are largely due to the constrained site, the fact that it's a corner lot. The existing building, you know, there's, there's a lot going on here. I mean, certainly like they could make different decisions as to where things are placed, but it would probably result in less parking. So I, I think this is probably the best situation of buildings on the site. And of course, there was parking in the front on Arch Street, you know, in years, today, and years past. As far as, you know, impacts to land, it's, it's not really a big deal there. You know, impacts to surface water, you know, that's aquatic resources. We're close to the Great Swamp, which is a critical environmental area. There is a wetland to the west off Oak Street. But again, you know, this is a developed area of the village, currently developed and will become further developed. So I don't think we're seeing any issues there. As far as the potential Blanding's turtle migration area, it, you know, the distance between the wetland west of Oak Street and the wetland on the other side of the rail line is quite lengthy. And of course, you'd have to cross, cross as a turtle the rail line. So I think we're okay there. Consistency with community character. You know, the architecture is proposed to be similar to what's there today. So that's consistent with community character. The use is proposed to be mixed commercial residential, which is consistent with what's permitted under zoning. They're seeking the area variances. It's up to the ZBA to determine, you know, whether they should be granted or not. But from a seeker's standpoint, I don't see any environmental adverse impacts from this project.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mike?
Hello? Did you ever do the turning radius?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the plan, yeah.
That was the red lines that are on that?
Yeah, these dash lines and that's the actual fire truck there. So it does swing the corner.
All right.
Can't go very fast, but you can swing the corner.
Oh, the dark dodge line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it. I see. I was looking at the red dodge line. Guess what? Yeah, then I guess really that was my only concern reclaiming part of the street there was, you know, what that, what that turning radius might be as far as public safety. Yeah, do you want to?
Make a motion to issue a negative declaration?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Back to the ZBA?
Back to the ZBA.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We'll see you guys next month.
Yeah.
Hand him something?
Nope.
All right.
I'll make a.
Escrow. Let's talk about escrow. Remember how we wanted to add that to every agenda?
Oh, God.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, thank, thank, thank you.
Of course.
Wait a second.
Good seeing you.
We were supposed to have a public hearing on Five Oak.
We were.
Oh, okay.
Go grab them quickly, because you can't.
No, I can't.
I mean, we could hold it at the next meeting, but it was advertised now. I mean, it's okay. The, you know, people that, there's no one here that showed up to speak, but we're going to hold it. We have to open it and then close it, you know? We have to at least go through the motions.
No, 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 let's get it out.
But it's okay. You didn't, we're on.
Okay. Um, yeah, can we do a motion to?
Make a motion that we open the public here for Five Oak.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Do you have anybody that wants to speak about the Five Oak project?
You want to say something?
I feel like I should say something.
How wonderful it is.
Please, please say something.
Tell me again about five parking spaces.
I need a motion that we close the public here.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, escrow. All right.
Okay, now, okay. Thanks again. Have a good night.
Did you want to make a public comment?
I was here to protest.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you missed your chance.
Yeah.
Yeah, supposed.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just saying that we need to have escrow on each agenda so that it gets kind of forward thought. But Route 22.
568 Route 22.
Yeah. How, where'd you land with that?
So he said he would bring in the check sometime between now and the next meeting.
Great. So let's try and make it a, a number before adjournment for each meeting. And that way we can think and make sure that it's moving.
Or collecting it ahead of time?
Well, yeah, I think this is just a good checkpoint. Like, it's not like any decisions have to be made or someone has to bring the check here. It's just more like what's coming up? What do we know is coming up? And like, it's just a reminder point.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's all I got.
Yeah, well, okay.
You've been good at it, so.
You know, we've been on this.
But if, for instance, you have like five projects kind of rotating in, things would start getting a little messy. And this just gives us an opportunity to remember, okay, what's going on? What have we received escrow for? And like, you know, things might get crazy. We never know.
Yeah, no, no, it's good.
Was there anything in particular we needed to discuss with escrow tonight?
No, I just wanted to see where we were at with Route 22. And any other projects that are coming in.
Five Oak, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion that we.
Return? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I know what I was going to say. You, you should invite the, why don't you see if the architect or consultant could come and give us a presentation on, whatever that's called.
Yeah.
American knowledge?
Right?
Sure.
American, you'd be, be know.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be worth everyone's time, don't you think?
He said it's basically like a handbook, like.
Was that, was that Robin Oates talking about that?
Yeah, and he's by book, apparently.
And I think that would help us know, you know, like what, you know, where something rises to the level of needing to be considered for that.
Right.
Right? I mean, because we can't put, you can't, you can't put like architectural restyling on every applicant that comes at the door, right? I mean, like, you don't want to make it so prohibitive to, to do business.